First, we want to give another thank you to Brian McCollum for a great show today. We appreciate again his coming and.[11.01][11.01][applause] And we'll begin the meeting today with a pledge of allegiance. Flag is over here.[21.52][21.52][applause]
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll bring out Board President Walt Christensen to call the meeting to order.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Powder River Energy Annual Meeting, and I would like to call the meeting to order at this time. What did everybody think of the blood draw?[72.61][72.61][applause] Just for everybody's information, the blood draw was funded by unclaimed capital credits, and that's one of the things that we do with unclaimed capital credits. And I wouldn't call the people that don't claim their capital credits deadbeats, but anyway, they're just people that we can't find and they haven't claimed their capital credits. So anyway, thanks to the people that left some money with us. But anyway, I'd like to appoint Steph Pribelski as the Recording Secretary. So with that, I will introduce Mike Easley, who is our CEO, and he has a few introductions to make.
Thanks, Walt. Thank you. Hello, everybody. So just would like to take a few minutes here and introduce our guests and our board members and some other folks. So you guys have met Walt. Everybody knows Walt, but also with Walt is his wife Lana, so welcome Lana. Philip Habek, one of our directors. He's the Vice President of the Board. And Jerry Geis. Where's Jerry? He'll be back out for some other report for you folks. He's our Secretary of Treasury. His wife Gwen is here. Paul Baker. His wife Kelly is here as well. Jim Bumpgardner and his wife Shelley is here. Ruben Rithaler and his wife Shelley is here. And behind those awesome children, Allison Gee. Her husband is Sean. And we have Vella, Finn, and Anna. So welcome. And then also Mike Losi is here, and Connie's here, and we also have Jim Purdy is here as well. So from our, some other guests that we have that are associated with us, Bob Evans and his wife Kathy. Bob is actually a past Director on Members First, which is a power supply co-op that sits between us and Basin. He's also a Director of Fergus Electric. So Bob, we're happy that you could be here as well. From the Precorp Foundation, we have Mary Yemington, and her husband Bob is here. I think I saw them over here. Yeah, there they are. And Julie Swanda, a past Foundation Director, is here as well. Just wanted to thank our nominating committee. Mike Latham is here, but the other folks on that committee were Dave Reed, Chase Williams, Ben Schiffer, Thad Stoltz, and Jim Finema. And election judges, I think they're probably at work right now. We have Ogden Driscoll, Richard Costello, Tom Harland, Keven Lund, Dave Hoyt, and Chris Schock, and they are busy counting ballots. We do have also one of our Director candidates here. Scott Hudson is here from Sheridan. So Scott, thank you for your interest in the co-op, and you have met the other Directors already. We do have some special guests I'd like to introduce, starting off with Paul Suket. Paul is the CEO and General Manager of Basin Electric. So Paul, thank you for coming. Chris Bumpgardner, also from Basin Electric. Chris is the Senior VP of Administration and Member Services. So thank you, Chris, for being here. Mayor Paul Brooks from Sundance is with us. Thank you, Paul. Previously mentioned Senator Ogden Driscoll, he's back counting ballots. And we have Larry and Bonnie Smith, a Precorp retiree. Bob and Deb Vergnani. Bob is a past Director. It's good to see you, Bob. Dave and Barb Hoyt, also a past Director. And Kenny Knudsen and his wife Elaine, a past Director. Bob Tarver and his wife Nancy. Bob is a past Director. And we also have Tony Bellas, a past Director. Would also have a couple of special guests I'd like to introduce. And first of all, I'd like to introduce the State Treasurer, Mark Gordon. So Mark, you might want to come out and just say hi to the crowd.
Thanks. Well, thank you. It's nice to be State Treasurer, but I got to tell you, the thing I'm most proud of is I'm a member of Precorp. My wife Jenny is out there, and she pays the bills on a regular basis, and so thank you very much. I just had asked Mike to just take a moment or two. You know, we're in the middle of an election. You all probably know that. I certainly do. But I want to tell you a little bit about the Treasurer's Office and what we're doing to make sure that Wyoming is on a really strong footing going forward. Just let you know, we have about $20 billion, 500 million, sorry, $20 billion, 500 million dollars that we earned about a little bit over $900 million, almost a billion dollars off of that in earnings this year. 580,000 people, that is $1,500, a little better than that actually, of tax savings for each and every citizen of Wyoming. That's what the coal industry has done. That's what the oil and gas industry has done. That's what the ag industry has done, and the tourism industry has done. And I am so proud, so proud to be part of Wyoming, where we are leading the way. You know, just a little bit ago, we were commissioning the ITC. Basin Electric was there. Precorp was there. Wyoming stands right in the center of the nation's leadership on issues to do with coal and how we use coal better, on issues of how to do a better job on developing our resources, developing them responsibly, and leaving this world a little bit better. That's the way my dad taught me. But I also want to tell you, and I think next up you'll have a chance to hear from our team in Washington, our team in Washington is second to none. I have to tell you that this last year, I've had occasion to work with them on several issues. Issues that related to taxation on Wyoming sovereign funds, issues that related to rolling back the Clean Power Plan, and a number of other issues where our delegation is absolutely phenomenal. There is no better. There is absolutely no better. When I talk about what happens in this election, I want to tell you that we have a phenomenal cast, both coming up, and I've had the great pleasure of dealing and serving for six years now with Governor Meade, a phenomenal leader for this state, and also with the other four electeds, the other three electeds. And I have to say, our camaraderie and our leadership for this state has never been more solid, and I look forward to working, hopefully, with the next round of the Secretary of State, the Auditor, the Treasurer, and the Superintendent. And there's another job there, too. So with that, thank you very much. My wife and I are here, delighted to be here. Thank you, Board of Directors, for all you do. Thank you for being part of Wyoming. God bless Wyoming. God bless the United States, and God bless our way of life, and let's keep it free. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. So I always like to do introductions because that gets me over the fears and jitters of public speaking, so when I do my talk, I'm not quite so nervous. But I always mess up my introductions, and so I just want to introduce Mike Kelvey, one of our Directors. I admitted him from my introductions earlier. I think I did that last year. I'm not sure who I picked on last year, but I know I did it last year. So anyway, so my nervousness is over, which is good. I'd like to introduce one more special guest that we have today. I'd like to introduce Wyoming Senator John Barasso. He's known by many as Wyoming's Doctor. He has a long and recognized career in public service and medicine. In the U.S. Senate, he serves on committees that directly impact Wyoming's economy and Precorp and co-ops, energy interests, public lands, national parks. He's the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Environment and Public Works. He has a wife Bobby. She lives in Casper. They have three children. And it's my pleasure to introduce Senator Barasso. Thank you, Senator.
Well, thank you. It's wonderful to be here. Coming in, two people asked me the same question. One was John Hines, longtime Senator from here. He and I were seated next to each other in the State Senate for five years. And the other is Mike Easley, and they both said, "How are things in Washington?" I said, "It is always better in Wyoming, always."[683.23][683.23][applause] And the reason, of course, is we have the Code of the West. Live each day with courage, take pride in your work, and do what needs to be done. And Powder River Energy has been doing just that now. Seventy-three years of meetings, 12,000 customers, over 100 employees, and providing so much energy also to the coal mines, to oil and gas, as well as to the residential customers. It does a remarkable job. And the Chair, as the number-two guy on the Energy Committee and chairing the Environment and Public Works Committee, I'm asked occasionally to talk about energy. And to me, energy is about, it's the three Es. Energy security, economic strength, and environmental stewardship. And if you want to really jump-start an economy, what you do is you cut taxes, you get regulations out of the way, and you unleash American energy. That's what President Trump promised he would do. That's what we have done, and we've taken it from energy security to energy independence and all the way to energy dominance. That's where we are, and you can feel it around Wyoming. I mean, you see it in your communities. You see it all around. There is a confidence and an optimism and a positiveness that we see right here, certainly in Campbell County and Gillette, but all around the state of Wyoming. But there is still more to be done. And talked a little bit about the Clean Power Plan. Mark Gordon mentioned it. The President just the other day came out with his new approach to the Clean Power Plan. On Thursday's USA Today, there was an op-ed in the USA Today about the Clean Power Plan. Guy named John Barasso from Wyoming wrote it.[791.82][791.82][snaps paper] And it says, "The Obama Administration abused environmental laws by issuing punishing regulations. It tried to transform the energy sector by declaring war on coal." It goes on, "My home state of Wyoming felt the effects firsthand. Wyoming is America's leading coal producer. Coal creates good-paying jobs, helps communities grow, and provides affordable energy." It goes on to say, "Energy production and the use vary from state to state. States need maximum flexibility under the Clean Air Act. It takes states, it is the states that can best tackle the question of how we reduce emissions without raising people's electric bills and hurting our economy." I'm happy to share this with all of you, but you get the point. We ought to be making the decisions here at the state level. We don't need heavy-handed bureaucrats out of Washington to make those decisions for The other issue that applies, and I'm glad that the Treasurer is here because he is doing all of the right things on this, it's the efforts by the so-called Bank of the West, which to me seems to be the Bank of San Francisco, because that's where their headquarters are, even though they're owned by a group out of France. So it's the Bank of France who has decided that they don't want to do any business with anybody that deals with coal, oil, gas, any of the fossil fuels. Well, we have 23 of those branches in the state of Wyoming. Look, they're dedicated workers, the people of Wyoming who work in those branches. But that is a direct assault on the people of Wyoming, on our energy, on our industries, on our economy. And I think that the Treasurer was right to say, "We're taking the state money out, and it's not going back into that bank." So he has done it.[897.04][897.04][applause] And finally, we're in a fight with the state of Washington, where the governor there is an environmental extremist, and he's blocking the building of a port that we want to use to ship Wyoming coal, Montana coal, to people that want to buy it. In Korea, in Japan, in China, all that whole part of the world wants our Wyoming coal. It's cleaner than what they're burning there now. They have huge opportunities, and it's a great market for us. But the governor of Washington State believes, apparently that he's the Secretary of State and the Secretary of Commerce, as well as the head of the U.S. Trade Commission. Well, we're going to fight him all the way through court. A number of states have sued him, and it may go all the way to the Supreme Court because we have a right to interstate commerce. We need to build those ports, and we're going to continue with that fight.[944.73][944.73][applause] And people say to Mike and to Liz and I, because we work very closely together, do they say, "Is all you do fight?" Well, we fight, but we also try to educate those folks back there, educate them like where their food comes from, beyond the grocery store, where their energy comes from, where the electricity comes from, when they turn on the lights, where the gas comes from, when they fill up the car. A lot of them don't have a clue. So that's the other part of what we do. So I was here in the Camplex last Saturday night. They had the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet here. One of the guys said, "What do you really tell them in Washington from the people of Wyoming?" I said, "It's real simple, three words. Leave us alone. Our air, our water, our land, our guns, leave us alone."[991.63][991.63][applause] So I'm grateful for all your support, all your leadership, all the information that we continue to get. Mike and Liz and I, we work closely together. We say, "One for all, all for Wyoming." We fight every day on your behalf. It's just such a privilege to be with you here today. And let me just close by saying, "God bless you. God bless Wyoming. God bless the United States of America." Thanks, Amit Lutz, for letting me join you today.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mark Hughes. I'm General Counsel for Powder River Energy Corporation, and it's my privilege to declare that pursuant to Article 3, Section 4 of the Bylaws, we do have a quorum. It's interesting, we had a quorum about 9:15 this morning. There were over 162 people here at that point. So I do believe the blood draw worked well, and I appreciate all of you coming, and hopefully the Board of Directors will look favorably upon something like that in future years. I'm also, I wanted also to make another announcement that, starting this fall, we began reviewing our bylaws as they relate to the state of Wyoming rules for energy cooperatives. And following the review and at our 2019 Annual Meeting, I believe that we will be updating you on any changes that we may want to make to confirm the existing rules, to make our bylaws comply to existing law, and we'll keep you notified of what's going on throughout the year through the REN and through Precorp news source, other news sources. I do usually try and tell a joke, and I'm going to do that before I read the actual notice of the meeting, but as a lawyer, I try and find cases occasionally that are funny, young lawyers, even me. I mean, I've done it many times where they say pretty ridiculous things in court, and the court reporters get to write those things down, and they come back to haunt you at times. Now, this isn't my case, but I did want to kind of read you this transcript. So this is a young defense lawyer, and he's cross-examining a police officer, and he says, "Did you see my client flee the scene?" And the police officer says, "No, sir, I didn't. But subsequent to that, I observed someone running several blocks away who matched the description of the offender." "Well, who provided you with the description of the offender?" "Well, a fellow police officer reported it to me and gave me that description." Lawyer says, "Well, a fellow police officer provided the description of the so-called offender. Do you trust this fellow police officer?" "Oh, yes, sir, I do with my life." About that time, the lawyer says, "With your life? Well, let me ask you this, officer. Do you have a room where you change your clothes in preparation for the day's duties?" "Yes, I do," he answered. "Do you have a locker in that room?" "Of course I do." "Why wouldn't I?" the officer answered. "Well, do you, sir, personally have a locker in that locker room?" "Why, yes, I do." "Well, why is it, officer, that if you trust your fellow officers with your life, that you would have to lock your locker room and your locker each and every time you use that locker?" And the police officer gets a big grin on his face, and he says, "Well, sir, you see, we share the building with the court complex, and very often, a bunch of lawyers walk through that area, too."[1210.01][1210.01][laughter] I have one more, and I'll try and get through this pretty quick. There's an elderly lady. She's Italian. Her name is Mrs. Esposito. And she has a son named Tony who lives with a female roommate named Maria. And they invited Mrs. Esposito to dinner. And Mrs. Esposito came to dinner, and over the course of the meal, Mrs. Esposito couldn't help but notice how pretty her son's roommate was, how Maria was the roommate. And over the course of the evening, she couldn't help, given their behavior and how they reacted with each other, if there wasn't something more going on. So before his mother asked him any questions about it, little Tony said, "Mother, I know what you're thinking, but I assure you, Maria and I are just roommates." About a week later, Maria came to Tony's house saying, "Ever since your mother was here for dinner, I've been unable to find the silver sugar bowl. You don't suppose that your mother took it back home, do you?" Anthony says, "Well, I doubt it, but I'll email her and ask her just to be sure." So he sat down, and he sent his mother an email. "Dear Mama, I'm not saying that you did take the sugar bowl from my house. I'm not saying you didn't take the sugar bowl. But the fact remains, it has been missing for approximately two weeks since you were here. Your loving son, Anthony." A few days later, he gets a reply from his mother, which reads, "Dear son, I'm not saying that you do sleep with Maria, and I'm not saying you do not sleep with Maria, but the fact remains, if she was sleeping in her own bed, she would have found the sugar bowl Okay, so it's my privilege to read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the 2018 Annual Meeting of the Powder River Energy Corporation will be held in Gillette at the Camplex Energy Hall on Saturday, August 25, 2018. Order of business shall be as follows. Report to the number of members who are present in person in order to determine the existence of a quorum and the number of members present by proxy. I actually don't have the number by proxy. I didn't write it down, but I know we have a quorum. Reading of the notice of the meeting and proof of publication. Approval of unapproved minutes of previous meetings of members. Presentation and consideration of all necessary reports. Election of Directors. Unfinished business, new business, adjournment. Have a great meeting. Thank you very much.[1380.01][1380.01][applause]
Well, as many of you know, we don't have an in-house attorney, and so, Mark, I call him loophole. He's our out-house attorney, so.[1396.23][1396.23][laughter] And I've been hearing some grumbling from one of our Board members over here, and I won't mention his name, but his initials are Paul Baker.[1410.01][1410.01][laughter] Anyway, he doesn't, he's grouchy, which his wife Kel out in where she's at in here. She could attest to that. Once in a great while, he gets that way. But anyway, I just want to have everybody see what a good-looking Board of Directors that you guys have all voted on. And I put them up here on the stage, I think this is the second time that they've been on the stage. We used to do it a long time ago, and we've got three brand-new Board members on here, and they're both, or all three of them are doing a whale of a job, beginning with Allison on the end there. You don't ever.[1454.47][1454.47][applause] You never have to wonder what she's thinking, and I don't know whether that's because she's an attorney or whether she's a mother and a wife, but anyway, hats off to Allison. She's doing a heck of a job, so the members voted her in there, and so give yourselves a pat on the back for electing a very qualified person. The next new member that we got is Mike Kelvey, and he's from Sheridan County.[1488.51][1488.51][applause] Mike is a airline pilot for United Airlines, I believe. And anyway, he's hit the ground running and doing a very good job, too. The last person that we put on our Board, and incidentally, Mike and Jim Purdy were appointed because of Board Member resignations. And Jim Purdy from Johnson County.[1518.83][1518.83][applause] Another very qualified Board Member. And I would just like to hear with applause or yelling, screaming, whatever, do you like to see your Board Member up there? Would you rather have him out here in the audience?[1539.11][1539.11][applause] See, if you guys hadn't have made any ruckus at all, I would have said, "Next time, go out there," or, "Hell, you can go out there right now." But anyway, you guys are stuck now. Anyway, I would ask for approval of the 2017 Annual Minutes. Would you like them read? We've got a very capable Secretary back here.[1573.41][1573.41][laughter] It's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Has everybody had the opportunity to vote? Okay? I will call the voting closed, and the election judges are excused to go start counting the ballots, and you're supposed to go back there where you had lunch. So anyway, as soon as Jerry gets back, then we will hear the Treasurer's report. While we're waiting on him to come back here, I'd like to share something that happened on the way up here this morning. I don't know, is my wife Lana in here? There she is. Anyway, I don't know how many of you married folks ever get instructions on the way to the meeting or on the way to anything, but anyway, I was getting some instructions on the way up here today, and she said, "You're driving too fast." I said, "I'm not either. The speed limit is 70. I'm only going 72." And then I see this car coming up behind me, and I didn't think much about it, but you know how law enforcement people are. They like to drive up behind you real fast and then just kind of hang in there and get your license number and all that. And, well, to back up a little bit, you know, we've got, we try to satisfy the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service by protecting their poor little sage chicken. And we've done, you know, in the electric business, we've done about everything we can to keep the eagles from preying on the darn things, and they don't even eat them. They just like to kill them. But anyway, when I was watching this car come up behind me, what should happen to me, but I ran into a damn sage chicken.[1706.11][1706.11][laughter] And this car was right on my donkey, and anyway, when I hit that sage chicken, the shotgun flew up over the cab of the car and landed on that car that was behind me. Anyway, broke his windshield. Then the red lights came on, and the booger stopped me. He came up there, and he said, "Do you know what I'm stopping you for?" And I said, "I have no idea, but I'll bet you better, you probably got a good reason." He said, "I'm going to give you a ticket for flipping me the bird."[1741.21][1741.21][laughter] So anyway, Jerry's back here.[1748.51][1748.51][applause] So here's our Board Secretary Treasurer with his report.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for coming. It's great to see a good turnout here at our meeting. It's important for you guys to come and be involved in your co-op, and we appreciate For the Treasurer's report this year, not anything wild and exciting happened so far this year. We've had a decent year. Hmm. There, we're getting there. Co-op has had a little bit of growth last There, we're getting there. Co-op has had a little bit of growth last year after seeing some decline. Yeah, we sold 227 billion kilowatt-hours, which is a lot of electricity. But we've got a lot of industrial load, you know. And in our sales, we're in the top 4% of over 800 co-ops in the nation. So, we're really proud of that, and all of our members are what makes that work. Okay, and this just gives you a little breakdown on where our revenue comes from. You know, the residential, seasonal, which would be cabins and stuff like that in the mountains, because we've got stuff up in the Big Horns. Just a total revenue nearly $200 million. Our commercial and industrial load, CBM, are all a huge part of it. We've got deferred revenue. We used last year to meet our metrics. Okay, and our deferred revenue account, we created in 2009. And our sole goal in that was to, if we had unusual income or a basin bill credit or a large retirement of capital credits from basin or somewhere, we deferred that money instead of just passing that down through and paying it right out. So, the next year, if things went down, we had to have a rate increase, we put that funds in there to try and stable ours rates, to try and keep everything as level and even to the customers we can. Because going back and raising rates, especially, I guess, to give back five bucks to every member this year, and then next year, ask for that five bucks right back, isn't being very good stewards of your money. It's trying to keep things stable and predictable for you, our customer. And so, as you can see, in 2009 to '12, we had $7.5 million in that account. 2013, we used $4.5 million out. Didn't have a great year. 2014 and '15, we put money back in. 2016, oil had gone down, coal was down, everything was down. We used a lot of money out of that to keep our rates stable. 2017, we were able to put money back into it, and right now, we are at about $2.3 million. Not using it as a big slush fund, not building up a lot of money, just trying to keep things as stable as we can for the co-op. Okay, and then somebody takes care of me and gets me on the right slide. Operating expenses, nothing real exciting here. Just transmission cost, operations, you know, $40 million in expenses. Everything has been stable there. Our employees have done a heck of a job over the last couple of years to really work at decreasing costs. We're down employee-wise from what we were. As things have, usage has gone down, our employees and staff have really worked hard at trying to keep our operating expenses at the bare minimum without hurting service. Purchase power, single biggest cost we have. You know, we purchased $150 million in cost of a total of $191 million in operating or in our business. Basin Electric is doing everything they can to keep the rates stable, to keep us in competitive and be good stewards of your business. 6.4 cents per kilowatt-hour, which was 477 out of 811, which puts us in the bottom half of the co-ops, the bottom almost 40%, below the U.S. median. So, doing what we can there. Total summary of operations, pretty self-explanatory. I don't need to read all that. Our net margin, running $12 million. So, nothing really jumps out there. We were able to allocate capital credits back last year. But once again, you see, purchase power is a majority of our costs. Last year, we retired $14 million in capital credits, which is more than we have been doing, but there was a big retirement from, a credit from Basin Electric that came back down through. That's why that normally retire $2 to $3 million in capital credits. Last year was an unusual year because of that. Last year, we allocated, or in 2016, we allocated a margin on the capital credits from the generation and transmission co-ops. We have two different types of capital credits. We have those we get from our generation and transmission cooperatives, and then we have our local co-op capital credits. And so, we allocated in 2016, and then 2017, the margin in 2018. Co-op tries to be very involved in our communities all over in the five-county area we serve. And here is some of the ways that we are involved, and the members benefit, and the members' families. You know, we sponsor scholarships and purchase livestock at county fairs and community involvement committee. Then, the U.S. members donate stuff back into the community a couple of different ways. One of them is, some people at different times, for whatever reason, donate their member capital credits. Instead of cashing your check and taking your capital credits, you donate them back to the foundation. And last year, that amounted to $10,000 worth. The Operation Roundup, if any of you are involved in that, where they just round your bill up to the nearest dollar, and that money goes to Operation Roundup. And there's a little over $14,000 last year. So, that's a couple of ways the members themselves donate back into their community directly through us. And then, we've got the Home Efficiency Loan Program, which provides interest-free loans for doing improvements and stuff in your house. Last year, we loaned out $7,500 in that. But that's just a few of the ways we try and keep everything going and well for our members. And then, finally, our pledge to you is just to be positively influencing and improving the lives for those we serve by providing reliable energy and services while paving the way for access and affordability. And that's our mission, is just to be reliable and affordable to all our members. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. One thing I forgot to mention earlier, I'd like to thank Sue Collins Catering for the lunch that they provided. So, if we could give them a hand, it'd be You know, there's been a heck of a lot of things go on in the world and in our community in the last year. We've got three brand-new board members. We've got the opportunity to get three, or well, probably two more, because Baker doesn't have anybody running against him. But anyway, thank you to the board members for doing a great job this past year, and thank you to the members. I'll tell you what, without you guys, we wouldn't have a co-op. And another group of people that are, have a big responsibility and keep this thing going are all the people that work for Powder River Energy. If they could stand up and be recognized, if any of them are in here, I know they're floating around here somewhere. But anyway, thank you to the Precor employees. I know a lot of people hate to see their bills come, but if it weren't for the billing and the linemen, I mean, they all work together, and they keep this thing afloat. And anyway, I just want to thank you guys and give it the credit you so deserve. So, the last year, like I said, has been, it's been challenging, not just for Precor, but Basin Electric. And Basin Electric has, they've had kind of a daunting task going on up at Bismarck, but they've had a voluntary retirement deal, and I think they've, I think there's 300 and some employees that have decided to go away from Basin Electric. And by doing that, that's going to save the company 50 million bucks or something, I think I heard. So, anyway, hats off to Basin and all the things that you do to keep our power affordable. And we'd like to have free power. As you're going to hear in Mike Easley's report, by the year 2050, the first thousand megawatt-hours, no, I don't think that's what he said. Anyway, there's going to be some free energy coming to you if we can live till 2050. But anyway, Michael explained that a little bit later on. But earlier today, I heard a story from a good friend of mine that I don't see very often. But anyway, he was telling me about the governor and his wife. They were driving down the road and had to get some gas, and so, they pulled into this gas station, and it's a full-service station, which not very many of those around anymore. And anyway, pulls up there, rolls his window down, the attendant comes out and said, "What can I get for you, sir?" And he says, "Well, fill her up with asphalt and check the oil and tires, wash the windshield. It's raining out." And anyway, so, the guy said, "Well, I probably won't be much need of washing the windshield." He said, "That's fine." So, the governor rolls his window back up, and he looked at his wife, and he said, "Didn't you used to date that guy?" And she said, "Yeah, I did." And he said, "Just think, if you would have married him, you could have been married to a gas pumper right now." And she said, "If I would have married him, he would be governor." So, your co-op is healthy. And anyway, thank you to everybody for coming to your 73rd